Good evening. I would like to open the October 23, 2017 Bellbrook City Council meeting. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson is absent. Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
No move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to excuse Mrs. Seager-Lawson, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Formal approval of city council regular meeting minutes of October 9, 2017. Does any member on council have corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements this evening. I have nothing. We did have an executive session from 5:45 to 6:00. It was to discuss personnel matters to consider employment or discipline of public employees. And then we also had a work session from 6 o'clock till 7 o'clock. And that's all I have for mayor's announcements. Public hearings of ordinances. We have none tonight. We do have two introductions of ordinances. We'll start with ordinance number 2017-9. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 1224 subdivision regulations of the Bellbrook Municipal Code. There are only two changes, and inspection fees and inspection costs are changing from 4% to 6%. That's the only change in the entire code.
Ms. Schlockeck?
Yes. So, when a developer comes to the city and wants to build houses either in the city or if they're in the township but they're on our water system, we have to review their plans and then inspect the construction of their infrastructure. What Chapter 1224, the subdivision regulations, did before is they required the posting of a 4% cash bond. And basically, the city would take that money and then charge off the engineer fees for the plan review and the inspection fees against that. What we've found with the most recent developments is that 4% is not enough. We still will go back to the developers and bill them for the balance, but we're going to increase the 6%, and that will make it a little easier for us to get the money up front rather than have to go back and bill them. So, it'll go from 4% to 6%. And if the money is unused, we return it back to the developer. This isn't a revenue source. It's just to offset the cost of our engineer reviewing it and then our inspection fees as the construction is going on.
Any questions on council?
How does the 6% relate to our neighbors? Is that consistent? Are they at 10%? It just seems like that's a very low number. And I know the construction industry is doing well right now, but if we hit a downturn, I'm concerned that maybe we'll have a harder time chasing after it.
Different places handle this differently, so not everyone does it this way. If -- a lot of places that have an engineer on staff
Right.
-- will just charge a flat fee, and that's the fee that they get whether they go over or under, it doesn't matter, they charge that, so it's different. We're actually just passing through the cost from our engineer to them. So, I went back and looked at our current projects and said, "Well, if we had collected 6%, how would we be?" And if we collected 6%, we would've been in good shape on each of these.
Okay.
So, I just try to cover the costs that we have to not have to go back and rebuild the developers. Just in the last month, I've sent invoices to three different developers because they owe more than what was originally collected.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? This is an introduction of ordinance, so we will have a public hearing on this at our next meeting.
I think it's probably -- the developers appreciate that, too. They don't get an unexpected bill.
Yes. I can say that with certainty because they didn't like the bills, but it is what it is.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2017-9?
No move.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to introduce ordinance number 2017-9 and ordinance amending Chapter 1224 subdivision regulations of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. We have one more introduction of ordinance this evening, ordinance number 2017-10. Mr. Edwards?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number 2017-10, an ordinance amending Article 19, enforcement and penalties of the Bellbrook zoning code. Whereas the city of Bellbrook has enacted the Bellbrook zoning code, and whereas the purpose of the zoning code is to protect the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Bellbrook, whereas the city desires to amend Article 19, enforcement and penalties, of the Bellbrook zoning code to allow for the assessment of civil penalties for violations of the zoning code, and whereas the Bellbrook Planning Board conducted a public
Can you speak louder, please?
Whereas the Bellbrook Planning Board unanimously approved the amendment and recommendation adoption by the city council, and whereas all amendments to the zoning code must be approved by ordinance. Now therefore, the city of Bellbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the following amendment to Article 19, enforcement and penalties, of the Bellbrook zoning code be approved with additions shown by italics and underline and a deletion shown by strike-throughs and brackets. Article 19, enforcement and penalties. Section 19.12, penalties. One, violation of any provision of this ordinance or any amendment or supplement thereto or failure to comply with any of the requirements of this code may be enforced either through the filing of a misdemeanor complaint or assessment of a civil penalty or both. B or A, minor misdemeanor, except as otherwise provided herein, any person, firm, or corporation violating any of the provisions of this code or any amendment or supplement thereto shall upon conviction of any minor misdemeanor be fined not more than $100. B, civil penalties. A person who violates any provision set forth in a provision of the zoning code has committed a civil offense and is subject to civil penalties. Prior to assessment of a civil penalty, the zoning inspector shall issue written notice of the civil violation to the offending person. The notice shall include: A, the street address of the property subject to the notice of violation; B, a description of the violation and the sections of the ordinance violated; correction action that will eliminate or correct the violation; the reasonable timeframe required to correct the violation; E, provide information to the property owner of the right to a hearing before the boarding of zoning appeals if a request for a hearing is made within 20 days of receiving this notice; F, when applicable, include a statement of the right to file a lien; Two, the written notice of the violation shall be served by one of the following methods: A, delivered personally; B, sent by certified mail to the last known address and receiving a return receipt showing delivery of the mailing; or C, if the notice is returned showing that the letter was unclaimed, serviced by regular mail; D, if the notice is required showing that the letter was not delivered for reason other than unclaimed, a copy of the notice shall be posted in a conspicuous place on or about the structure of the affected by such notice. Three, a person served with a notice of civil violation may request a hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals to contest the commission of the violation, to offer an explanation of the circumstances, or to offer proof of correction. The request shall be made in writing and received by the city within 20 days of the person's receipt of the notice of violation. The hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the provisions of Article 20 of the zoning code. If the person desires a presence at the hearing of the zoning inspector, the person must request the same in their written response to the notice of civil violation. If the person served fails to remedy the zoning violation within a reasonable time, if the person admits the offense by writing response, or if the person fails to attend a requested hearing, the zoning inspector may pursue enforcement as set forth in this section. If the person denies the offense by written response, the person must also request a hearing before the zoning Board of Appeals. In accordance with Section 19.15, the zoning code, when a notice of civil violation has been issued pursuant to this section, the following amounts are hereby assessed upon the violator. A, any violation of the zoning code that is a first offense shall be $25 per day per offense or $250 per offense total. B, any violation of the zoning code that is a second offense shall be $50 per day per offense or $500 per offense total. C, any violation of the zoning code that is a third offense shall be $75 per day per offense or $750 per offense total. Four, those who erect signs contrary to the provision of this ordinance shall be, upon conviction, or assessed by civil penalties not more than $10 per offense, up to a maximum of four offenses in any 12-month period. Illegal signs are subject to confiscation by the city and will not be returned to the owners until all penalties are satisfied. Unclaimed signs shall be held for 30 days and then disposed as a surplus property. Convictions or civil penalties for sign violations in excess of four offenses in a 12-month period shall be fined upon conviction or assessed a civil penalty, meaning not to exceed $25 per offense. Section 2, this ordinance shall take and be enforced from and the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this ordinance is being introduced tonight for a public hearing on November 13. As council knows, we had a similar ordinance earlier this year relating to violations of the property maintenance code. Since this is the zoning code, it went through the planning board. They have to initiate any changes to the zoning code, so they had a public hearing on this last week on October 17. They met and recommended approval of this to council. Effectively, what this does, it gives the city another way to handle violations of the zoning code. Right now, if somebody violates it, we can criminally prosecute them, and that works in some cases, but if it's an out-of-state person or a bank that owns a property, things like that, it really limits our ability to pursue that. With the civil violations, we can assess a civil penalty based on the violation, and ultimately, if it goes unpaid, it can be turned into a lien on the property. So, what this does, it gives us another tool for us to use when we're trying to get property owners to comply with the zoning code. Again, this will have the public hearing at the next meeting, but that is the summary of it.
Any questions on council? I know we went through this at the last meeting with the other one, which is pretty similar. I will say, I know there's a house around the corner from where I live that is bank-owned with a sheriff's sale. The garage door's broke, won't close. Of course, the bank's not going to respond. It's already been sold at sheriff's sale, but it'll still take months and months to respond. So hopefully, if we have an ordinance like this, we can -- and we've already been sending numerous letters to the bank, but they haven't responded. So the neighbors are obviously not happy. So hopefully, with these changes, it will make it easier for us to address the bank-owned homes. Seeing no questions, do I have a motion to introduce? No, you can't, not at this point. You can ask the questions at the public hearing next week, or in two weeks. This is the introduction of ordinance, so next week is the public hearing, and then everyone will have an opportunity and time to come up and address any questions. So may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2017-10?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2017-10.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance number 2017-10 and ordinance amending Article 19, enforcement and penalties of the Bellbrook zoning code, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. We have one resolution this evening, Resolution 2017-DD. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2017-DD, a resolution approving the replat of Lot Number 1B into Lots Number 1D and Number 1E, Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 1. Whereas Ohio revised code requires a replat for changes of lot lines or easements in a planted subdivision, and whereas the city of Bellbrook Consulting Engineer and the Bellbrook Planning Board have recommended approval of a plat of Lot Number 1B into Lots Number 1D and Number 1E, Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 1, and whereas the city of Bellbrook subdivision regulations stipulate that changes to a recorded plat shall be approved by action of the Bellbrook City Council. Now therefore, the city of Bellbrook hereby resolves that Section 1, the replat of Lots Number 1B and Lots Number 1D and Number 1E, Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 1 is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section 2, the mayor and clerk of council are authorized to affix their signatures to the revised record plan. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, and attached to the resolution that council has is a map of the area that I have put up here on the screen. So, just to give you some perspective, here's Little Sugar Creek Road, and here is the main entrance to Highview Terrace, Terrace Creek Road. There's an existing house here. There is a bridge where the creek goes through here, and then this is the Lot 1B. And I'm going to show you on another map here. So this is from an aerial photograph. Again, here's Little Sugar Creek, Little Sugar Creek Road, Terrace Creek. So this is the existing 1B. This line here is the corporation boundary. So this lot, although owned by the developer, is in Sugar Creek Township. So, what is being proposed is to basically split Lot 1B. We're going to take this little triangle off. This will be Lot 1D, which will be sold to a resident who's going to build a house there. But Lot 1B, as you can see, you can see it a little bit better on this map, this is where the possible roadway would go if this land were ever to be developed. So they didn't want to have this little triangle to be sold to a private landowner and then at some point need to extend the road to there. So by taking that little triangle and making it its own parcel that will be owned by the developer, that will remedy that. So this lot will be sold. This other rectangle here behind that is labeled Lot 4C will also be sold to this property owner, the future property owner. It's actually in Sugar Creek Township, though. So, it's been -- Sugar Creek Township is going through their own process to handle this component of it. They will sell it to the property owner. The house that will be built will be completely on 1B. So the house will be completely within the city of Bellbrook, but the property owner wanted additional land for their backyard, so they put it on one plat map just for recording purposes. And if you look closely at the signatures, both Sugar Creek Township and Green County Regional Planning and the city of Bellbrook all have to sign off on this plat before it can be recorded. So really, what our action is, is to make this 1D, this little triangle, 1E, and that will allow for that lot to be sold here in the future.
Council, this has already been through the planning board. I think we made a few modifications of this plat. The plat's already been approved, of course, and then we're just modifying the existing plat. Any questions on council?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Now I understand it.
Yep. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-DD?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-DD.
May I have a second?
No second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt Resolution 2017-DD, a resolution approving the replat of Lot Number 1B into Lots 1D and 1E, Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 1. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city managers report.
Yes, a couple items this evening first. We have some scouts here that may be of interest to this. Halloween is scheduled for next Tuesday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's what it airs in Bellbrook and Sugar Creek Township. So we want everyone to know that from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., a week from tomorrow, will be Halloween. The mayor had received a phone call from a representative from the treasurer states' office. We've talked before about the open checkbook that is offered by the treasurer states where you can post all your electronic payments or all your payments online. I know we've talked in the past that we generally don't get any inquiries about that information. If we did, we'd certainly be happy to share that with anyone, but I think you wanted to reconfirm that, I guess.
I have not called the gentleman back yet. Obviously, it's not my decision at all. I know we went through this process before. Some of the concerns have obviously been the software, some of those issues, and that anyone can answer any public record right now and receive it in a timely manner where a lot of other cities will not do that. But obviously, before I responded back or had him talk to Mark, I figured run it by council.
Is this new software compatible with our new ledger package or financial package?
I think it would be. We would have to develop an export file to get the information out, but then we could post it. It would just be -- what they're offering is the checkbook is just really the raw -- I mean, it's almost like a check register type thing. It doesn't give a whole lot of context to what the expenditures are for. They have additional software that you can pay for to do that, but the free software is just basically a check register.
And I've looked at the checkbook for other cities, and it is very confusing. It just has a check number, the date, the name, and the amount, and you have no idea what it's all about. And it could be like an expense reimbursement or, you know, buying something below or something like that. So I didn't see a lot of value when I looked at, to be honest. And we haven't had a lot of inquiries from citizens. I'm not sure that it's the most important precedent thing. And then secondly, with our financial package that we have right now, to the extent we've got to build a bridge to export this stuff, it gets a little bit more cumbersome, and it adds more of a, you know, disconnected type element to it, which I think sometimes puts at risk and may require additional time and effort on the part of staff.
Yeah, I would think that you could make it somewhat easy to do, but it would take some time to do that, and then it's all about, okay, who's going to do it? How often are they going to do it? Things of that, and then if it's not out there. But again, we would certainly, if anyone asked, we have that information. We could easily get that for them. We do that, but we've not had generally a whole lot of inquiries about that level of detail.
And the checkbook doesn't answer the question anyway. So you're going to have to get the checkbook, and I kind of think sometimes that may just cause more questions, like, what's this, what's that, what's this? And I looked at a couple pages, and I'm not sure I recognized on the other side a whole lot of who the payees were, and I thought, well, you'd certainly have to have a conversation to understand it better. So to the extent we haven't had people asking for it a lot, and it's become cumbersome that we need an automated tool to respond, I would almost think we hold defer it.
I would agree. It's not a problem. It's not broke. We don't need to fix it.
Or spend initial resources at this point.
Resources to do it.
We're trying to be fiercely responsible. We don't need to spend money on software that isn't going to be adequate to do the job. It's just a hook to buy more software.
The other component, the current treasurer state is term limited at the end of next year. He's the one who developed this program. Who's to say, like with any of those offices, if it's a priority for a future office holder to continue that program at no cost, somebody's paying something somewhere along the way for that product. So, it's a good point.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone else have any comments?
At last meeting, Mrs. Seager-Lawson mentioned our emergency operations plan, and we sort
of went back. We do have an emergency operations plan that we have here locally. It was last reviewed about five years ago, so the chiefs are -- and Dale Wilson, our service director, are in the process of reviewing that, making sure that the current information in there. It is, as you can imagine, fairly generic because you're trying to anticipate any number of things, from a weather event to a civil disturbance to an event that happened somewhere else. So there's all kinds of different things, but it's generic, and it identifies the resources available and how an incident would be handled. In addition to that, the Green County Emergency Management Authority has a similar thing on a countywide basis, that they have that material available. They have a listing of available resources, available places to shelter if that's what it needed, things of that nature. So I just wanted to bring that back up, that we do have that. We will, we've initiated the review of that document again. I think it's good to periodically review that and just make sure that everything's up to date. Phone numbers change, people change, things like that, that we have everything that we need in there. So that is ongoing. And then the final thing that I had, the levy, we've talked about that, I think, quite a bit at council here over the past six months. This is the last meeting before the vote on November 7. So again, we held another informational meeting that we did have some attendance at. We answered some questions, and I think our website answers a lot of questions that people have had. I know the one thing, really the key components to, you know, we've justified why we need the money, how we're going to spend it, though. I know the one component is adding a police officer, so that we can add a school resource officer to the thing, to our capacity. I think the big thing here is, we have had a request from the schools. There are four school facilities within the city of Bellbrook. We do try to patrol those with our current staffing to the best of our ability. What this would provide is a dedicated person that would be in those schools during the school year. They would rotate amongst those schools. I think it's, there's many benefits to that. Obviously, the education, the ability for the young students to see a police officer in a positive light and to interact with them, to know who they are, to know that there's somebody that they can talk to when they need something. The other thing, I talked with Councilman Greenwood about this, I mean, a deterrent is the other thing. It's unfortunate in this day and age that that's something that needs to be, but it's a deterrent that you have a police officer in there, that maybe somebody sees that and decides not to do something that they had thought about doing. So those are really the reasons that that position is needed. We want to be a partner with the schools during the daytime here in the city of Bellbrook. Those are our most populated areas, the schools within the city limits, so we want to make sure that we have the resources to protect those to the best of our abilities. When it comes to the firefighter position, most people may think we still have volunteer, a volunteer force here in Bellbrook. We do not. As of just in the last two weeks, our last two volunteers resigned, so we have no volunteer firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, no longer help the Bellbrook Fire Department. So everything is staffed by either full-time firefighters or part-time firefighters. Over the past several years, a lot of communities have had the same issue, so the ranks of the part-time firefighters has greatly diminished because they've been hired full-time in other places. So we think it's best to serve our residents by hiring one additional full-time firefighter, reallocating some of our other resources, our other current full-time firefighters, so that we can have two full-time firefighters on each shift. That allows us, that gives us a firefighter, a paramedic, two of them on each shift. If we get multiple calls, they have the ability to do different things, but that's the staffing model that we think we need to go to, to ensure that we have the staffing available for responses to the public. And then finally, council attended the walkability workshop that we had here. There's a great interest in improving downtown Bellbrook, making it safe for pedestrians, making it accessible to the businesses. We're just one component of that. The businesses and the residents who live down here need to do a lot of things, but we're going to earmark some of this money to help make some of those improvements, to make it, improve some of the sidewalks, potentially put some additional lighting in, do some streetscape improvements, maybe enclose some open drainage ditches, things of that nature with this money to help make downtown Bellbrook even more attractive than it already is. So those are really the key components as to what we need this money to do, and that's why we're asking the residents to approve it. And that's my last pitch on that, so to speak, at a council meeting.
Anyone on council have any questions for our city manager this evening?
Mark, have we had much feedback about the levy from citizens? I know we had two meetings, and we had very poor attendance at the first, a little bit better at the second, but has anyone called in to ask staff about it or anything? I was just kind of curious.
No, we've not had, we've had very little contact. We've sent out a postcard mailer. We have a lot of information out on the website. The Dayton Daily News, I think, has given us very good coverage of, they've written several articles about it to make people aware of it. Today, I got a call from the Xenia Gazette. They're planning to run an article on the different levies that are on the ballot here, but that's really all. I have not received a phone call from any resident with questions, or an email from anyone that has specific questions about the levy and the need for it and the reasons for it.
Okay. With that being said, I just want to thank you and city staff for what you've done to make the people aware of this, because it's a very significant levy for us. And with the cuts we've had at the state level, this is something that Bellbrook is going to need to move forward at the levels that we've grown accustomed to being accommodated. So, thanks.
Any other questions for our city manager? Seeing none, moving on. Seeing none, moving on. Committee reports, service? And tonight, safety?
Just a few things, Mayor. I attended the fire department's night out. It was a good turnout. A lot of things were demonstrated. A lot of information was available. And one of the things I picked up on was the car seat safety program that the fire department has. The training involved with that is quite extensive, to be able to train other people to come and get their car seats checked up, and that has to be recertified periodically. And I think we're one of the only, one of the few fire departments that even offers that service. And when you have little guys, that's really important nowadays. And I just wanted to say a few things about our police and fire departments. Large portion of their service is to provide public safety awareness and education on safety issues, as well as to provide this training and awareness to our citizens about things that can harm us. And the more anybody knows about danger and things that can put you in jeopardy, the better off we are. And a lot of our citizens participate and take part in this training. And I think it's shown with, you know, we don't have a lot of serious, a lot of serious things that happens in this city. I think that's part of the reason why. And the other thing is, like, the resource officer, and we've had police visit the schools regularly, and that, right there with the, you know, a new resource officer to be there longer, you can offset a lot of future problems. It's hard to actually assess what problems you do avoid. But I think overall, where you have communities that get involved in these kinds of programs, I think the outcomes are better. And our police and fire both do these programs. And the way I see the general fund levy before us is an investment in the future. It's not gonna, you know, take, once you get things in place, to get everything going. I've lived here 35 years, and I chose Bellbrook because of the safety, the schools. And when I was raising my kids, I felt safe. I never had to worry about it. I was just worried about getting kids to soccer games, getting to work, and those type of things. Now that my kids are grown, I would like to see those types of things maintained in the city of Bellbrook. And I think this levy is really important to maintain that and to make sure that Bellbrook stays a desirable place to live. And that's my pitch on it. Thank you. Hope everybody votes. That's all I have.
Finance and audit?
Mayor, I'm pleased to report that we did receive an email from the state auditor today that the financial statements have, in fact, been issued for the county year 2016. So we got the clean opinion, which is an unqualified opinion, which means the financial statements, as prepared and submitted by city staff, were audited, reviewed by the state auditors, and found to be, without any material exceptions or misstatements. So that's the highest form of evidence we can get back from the state auditor, and it's something that we greatly appreciate, and that's a great accomplishment for city staff. And by the way, while we're talking about the levy a little bit and how we spend money in Bellbrook, it's very key to understand that we're one of the few cities that does not have a specific finance director. We have a city manager slash finance director. Most cities would have two people filling those jobs, so we're able to save quite a bit of money having one person do both of them. With our city manager right now, Mark Schlagkacke, we're very lucky and fortunate that he's one that can very capably wear both hats. And when we looked and interviewed for him, we looked for that, and believe me, that was a major limitation with all the other candidates, so we're happy to have you here again. It's nice to get a clean audit report, and it's a little bit upsetting that the state waits so long to issue it, but I know the process has always been very long and drawn out. But we got the best type of report we could possibly get, so we're pleased with that. And my thanks to the city manager and staff.
Thank you.
And we'll get to go through it all again next year.
Exactly. With different people, but still the state.
It is arduous. Community affairs?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Old business? Seeing none. New business? We have one thing on new business tonight. Motion to authorize competitive bid for the Upper Hillside Water Main Improvement Project. I think obviously we've been through this a few times. Does anyone have any questions on that? If not, I have a motion to authorize competitive bid for the Upper Hillside Water Main Improvement Project.
So moved.
And I, second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to authorize the competitive bid for the Upper Hillside Water Main Improvement Project, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, open discussion. We'll start at the end.
I would just like to encourage our citizens to come out on November 7th and support the levy for all the reasons that we've talked about. People live in Bellbrook for a reason, because they feel safe and secure, and this is one way to maintain that will continue now and into the future.
Boris?
Nothing, Mayor. I would echo everything that council has brought before the constituents here in this meeting with respect to the levy and the issues at hand. I mean, it's for our future, and we desperately need the funds so that we keep that future bright for us and that, you know, we keep things economically streamlined so that we offer the best services to the people of the city of Bellbrook. And, you know, beyond that, please, please exercise your right to vote. That's what makes this country great.
I echo the same thing. Putting it in the terms of your household. Our income was cut, so you got a reduction in your paycheck, and we haven't had a raise in nine years. So, 2009, so eight, eight years.
Eight.
Yeah, so we, our income stream was reduced, but we haven't had a raise in property taxes in eight years.
Mr. Schweller?
Catch up.
Just to get, ask the citizens to vote yes on issue three on November the 7th. If anyone has questions with regards to the money, the need for the issue or for the levy, I would certainly encourage you to ask myself, anyone on council or city staff were willing to serve and provide the information to you. It's something that's very essential to the operations of the city, so please vote yes on November 7th, issue three. Thank you.
Only thing I'll just reiterate shortly on our levy is, one, of your property taxes, only 22% of your property taxes go to the city of Bellbrook, and we do not have an income tax. It always drives me a little crazy that I work in Centerville and pay them three times as much to Centerville than I do the city of Bellbrook. The other is, we are trying to make up $250-plus thousand a year for the state cut, through local government fund, the state tax, while I agree with the state tax being eliminated, and also the tangible personal property tax setbacks that we no longer recover. So we made it a pretty long time, but eventually, we're gonna have to do something. With that, this is open discussion, so I'm gonna start, and I would like to see each of you guys get up here, introduce yourselves, and tell us what troop you're with. And I always pick on the Boy Scouts. And just, oh, just to say one troop, what project, what badge you're working on to be here? And I think we have enough. Uh-oh. Do we?
Yeah.
Jamie will go get some.
She'll go get some.
Hi, I'm Kyle Hobbs. I'm a life scout, working on Eagle, and I'm Pirate Troop 75.
Well, thanks for coming out.
Hold on.
So, well, Bellbrook pins.
Thank you.
See, now you get your public speaking badge, too.
Hi, I'm Patrick Williams, and I am the rank of first class, working on my, yeah, just first class, working on citizenship in the community right now.
Thank you.
I'm Jeremiah Andrews, and I'm a second-class scout, working on first class.
Hi, I'm Chris. I am a first class, working on, no, no, I'm a star, working on life, and I am working on the citizenship in the community merit badge.
Very good. Thank you very much for coming out. And one more?
I am Justin Neeson, and I am star, and I'm working on my life rank. I am working on citizenship in the community, the merit badge.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. This is open discussion, so this is where anyone in the audience, you can come up. You need to announce your name, address, and you have up to five minutes if you want to ask any questions this evening. No one can hear a word, because they're on TV, so you need to come up and speak into the microphone and give your name and address, and...
My name is Doug Johnson. I live at 208 Pine Grove Drive. I've been here 16 years. The project that's gonna go up on hillside, or in that plat for water, that's hopefully not gonna include sidewalks?
Correct.
Good. Is it gonna be repaved over after they're digging?
Yes. Yes, they're going to replace the water main, and then they're going to resurface every street in the neighborhood there.
Okay, are they gonna cut it down first, before they resurface?
I would have to check the plans. I don't, I can't remember if milling is included in that or not. I would have to check on that.
Do you know the route of the water coming off a main as they're first coming into the plat?
If you're on Upper Hillside, there is an existing...
Is it dead center, coming down the street?
No, it is not. It is, it shifts, but primarily, it's on the southern part of the street to begin with. There'll be enough to maintain a single lane of traffic coming in and out of Upper Hillside when it goes through.
Okay.
But it's not going to be down the middle. There's other, I believe the existing water main's on the north side of the street, so we're gonna go on the south side of the street, along there, as close to the curb as we can get.
And just leave the old pipe now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Ultimately, the old pipe will keep operating until the day we shut it off, but then it'll stay in the ground forever.
And in place.
Yep.
We can put fracking gas in our... Anyway, so that's true throughout. They've sonar'd, done that, or done some radar. It's gonna stay to, as you go through the plat, it'll stay to the right all the way around?
No, no, it'll vary, because...
Does it ever cross anywhere?
Yes, it crosses all over the place. It'll go back and forth, because there's existing storm sewer in the ground, there's existing gas main, all kinds of different things. And the existing pipe does not stay consistent where it is, so we...
That's what I mean, existing.
Oh, the existing stuff, no, it's all, the existing stuff is all over the place, too, based on how that plat developed over time.
Yeah, I've already noticed that with where they put water meters and gas meters. They're all different to the plat.
Yes, that's made it a little more difficult.
So any plat, I walk up Big Tree and around that area, and it turns into a ridge, something.
Ridgeway.
Whenever they have bad slabs of sidewalk, does the city lot mark those, like they do in other cities?
Yes.
Who's responsible for repair?
The property owner.
Okay. Will the business owners, whoever owns the property downtown here, be responsible for the slabs that are down here?
Yes. Yeah, they have been notified.
In this project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Who's responsible for this corner down here with Darth Construction, where I see basically a major hazard there with their idea of a wheelchair ramp?
Well, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay, that would be Main Street?
Right.
Okay, the hardware store used to be there.
Okay.
Does anybody else know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I mean, right.
Catty Corner from the bar?
Okay.
Or that restaurant, whatever that is.
Right.
Take a look after this meeting, how that drops off. It's the pole that's there, it's a steel pole that carries a main electric line that goes all the way down.
And then the traffic signals, right.
Right, okay. Just take a look at that. That drops off, it's a major hazard. If anybody went down that in a wheelchair, I can't believe the city hasn't been sued already. They would be run over by a car. There'd be no way they control a wheelchair doing that. I'm sure there was some sort of saying that was okay, but it's not.
Okay.
And the other side of the street, too, over, we're acting attractive with an older building there. Okay, so are traffic tickets handled in the city?
They go to Xenia? They go to Xenia Municipal Court, yes.
Is that over on Lead Batter?
No.
Downtown?
Yes, right.
You know, courthouse?
I think it's right, I think it's right across the street.
It is.
Is it right across the street from the old courthouse? So there's another courthouse there, I think.
Next is a library.
Yeah, next is a library.
Okay. So whenever they have a contested case, or whatever's going on, I guess the policeman goes to Xenia?
Yes.
Okay. Do they use a squad car?
Yes.
Okay. Are they on the clock?
Yes.
Okay. Have you all ever thought about a mayor's court again? Apparently, they used to have one several decades ago.
It's been a while. We've not, it has been mentioned, but it's never been seriously pursued.
Okay. I mentioned something at the second meeting about the levy, about a, did anybody even go online to see what the Kettering Fire Academy was?
I did not, no.
Okay. Just wanted to add on record. So they also, I asked a question about what they're gonna do about the way these businesses look up and down the street. Can I, you know, when you say business district, are we certain all the way down? Gosh, I don't know. What's that store that's like a dollar store?
The Dollar General.
And we're going all the way to Dots, and that's what we're talking about?
Pretty much, and then some north-south, too, on Main Street there.
Yeah, like a block or two each way.
Right, right.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering what kind of plans you all, man, I walked that yesterday. There's some ugly properties there. There's one that's, well, actually, there's two or three that are empty. The corner that I just got done talking about, that building alone, I wonder when the last time it's ever been inspected for anything? I mean, we might need the county to come out and look at that.
You probably would, before anything occupied it. I mean, there's nothing in it now. There's no business in it.
Oh, is it empty?
Yes, it's empty. I mean, it's got storage in it, but it's not functioning.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw somebody going in and out of the back with storage, with shingles and whatever.
Right, that's probably all it is. But it's not operating as a business that, with customers.
Okay, so the sliding that you want to put on the main drag there, I guess it's like you've seen a lot of historic districts. It looks like an old gas line that's got a bulb in it or whatever's going on. How often, up and down through the area, do you see that being staggered?
We have not got to that level of detail yet.
Okay. So this bid on the project in my plat, so that really hasn't been let out to bid yet? That was just done tonight?
We, council authorized it to go out to bid. I literally got an email at 4:30 this afternoon with the draft bid spec, so it has not been, it has not gone out to bid yet.
Okay.
It'll go out, it'll go out in, probably in November. The bid will be opened in December, and then council will probably award it in January for a, roughly a June 1st, 2018 start date.
Okay. I just had wondered, because, I don't know, I thought, and obviously, I have no idea about it. I've never dealt with that, that that would be more backdated, you know, to make sure that... Because let's face it, over the last couple of years, in certain areas, when you do get started up on construction, you get forced into accepting a less-than company to do the work, because we did not do that soon enough. And I'm gonna say, the last, the crew that took this water line up that hill, I wouldn't hire them to cut my grass. That's how many mistakes they made along the way.
Oh, yeah, it was an ugly project, wasn't it?
I think it was D and D, Darrell, Darrell and Darrell, Darrell and his other brother Darrell, Construction Company. Whatever it was. Yeah, I'm just trying to be funny. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Johnson, thank you very much. And if you have other questions, too, you can call us during the, or call Mark during the day. I think most of them are working, so. It happens. Does anyone else have any questions, comments this evening? Does any other member on council have anything else to come for us this evening?
Nothing, Mayor.
Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.